To call this meeting to order. We will start with the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement. Please acknowledge with us that meetings of council are held in the traditional territory of the Anishnaubik, where chiefs of Sagamook Anishnaubik, Whitefish River, and Atikamixing Anishnaubik agreed to share this land through the Robinson-Kuron Treaty of 1850. Is there any disclosure or pecuniary interest in general nature thereof?
Yeah.
And Counselor Foster, I did receive your declarations of pecuniary interest. Counselor Foster, you have the right form. Counselor Van Alstine, you do not have the correct form. I have placed one in your mailbox.
Oh.
So I will still acknowledge that you do have a pecuniary interest, and I did receive what you have sent in. So at the time where we have, when we are discussing those motions that are on the floor, I will have you put in a waiting room, and you will be readmitted to the council meeting after that item has come up.
Do I read the disclosure now, or I don't have to?
Um.
I think we should.
Okay, so you can go ahead then, Counselor Van Alstine. We'll start with your disclosure.
Okay. I'm Maureen Van Alstine, counselor for the town of Espinola, disclose a pecuniary interest in the following matter to be considered at the December 8th regular council meeting. The Part D, Delegations and Petitions, Robert Swayze, Integrity Commissioner, D1 Integrity Commissioner Report, L2 Recommendations Regarding Integrity Commissioner Report.
Okay. And I believe you're supposed to state the nature of your you're supposed to state the general nature of your pecuniary interest. That was missing on your form that you had submitted.
Pecuniary, well, there's no money, I don't think. It's just the recommendations.
Okay.
I believe that said, I don't think there's any.
Thank you, Counselor Foster.
Okay, I have a pecuniary interest on item L3 of the agenda.
Okay.
The general nature of that is the proposed partnership to create the outdoor skating hall with the Lions Club. As a member of the Lions Club, I believe it prudent to declare an interest even there, even though there is no monetary gain by the club.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other disclosure of pecuniary interest? Okay, hearing none. We do have a public hearing this evening, and that there is a consent application. I was under the understanding that we may have somebody present, the applicant present, but I do not see the applicant on the line. The subject of the application concerns like land legally described as merit concession for Lot 7, RP 53R17462, Parts 1 and 2, Parcel 19332, PIN number 734060245731 Center Street. The property is zoned as C2 Highway Commercial. The purpose and effect of the application is a technical severance to correcting adjoining owners of a budding land. Adjoining properties have merged on title due to the same ownership. Severance will facilitate and permit the sale of property. So perhaps Cynthia can comment. I don't believe that we've received any other comments on that from the public. It was advertised, and we have not received any comments that I am aware of.
Nothing has been received, either written or verbal.
Okay, thank you. And we do not have the applicant on the line, so we do have a motion dealing with that a little bit later in the agenda. So we will move on to delegations and petitions. Now, this item, Counselor Van Alstine, has declared conflict for. So I'm going to just place her in the waiting room. Okay, and we do have Robert Swayze here, back with us to talk about the report that he has filed with us. So Mr. Swayze, I'll ask if there's anything that you want to state about your report, and then I can open up if counselors have any questions.
Yes, Madam Mayor, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right, this is an information report only. And all I'm doing is I'm informing council that I have decided to take Counselor Van Alstine's failure to declare a conflict of interest in voting on my last report to court. I want to say to you that this is an extraordinary decision that I've made. I have been an integrity commissioner for 12 years, and in the last two years, when the integrity commissioner was given the power to go to court, I have had at least four applicants, applications to do so, and I've refused. I have also been critical of other integrity commissioners who have gone to court because it's an extraordinary remedy. However, I find the behavior of Counselor Van Alstine to be disruptive and damaging to the operations of the town of Espinola. I have, my investigation has discovered that Espinola is a very successful municipality, both financially and in terms of the level of service, and certainly a credit to the management of the municipality. Ms. Van Alstine developed a negative attitude towards the CAO with absolutely no justification. She's a CAO of nine years, who has a degree in accounting and has done, as far as I can determine, an excellent job in terms of managing the municipality. This, Van Alstine, she started out with a complaint from the financial manager that I've received, when she ordered her not to attend a closed meeting, when of course she was entitled to be there. She then introduced a notice of motion to reprimand the CAO. This is in an open, open meeting of council, to reprimand the CAO completely unjustified with no reason to do so. This was an open meeting of council. Then lately, a motion to terminate. She actually brought a motion to terminate to an open meeting of council. She's had training, extensive training. She's had at least three sessions of training, one of them from me. She knows that she's not allowed to publicly criticize members of staff. And she's also filed at least four complaints to me against the mayor. And of course, the reason for those complaints is because the mayor supports the CAO. It's just not acceptable, and I have no alternative but to go to court and ask the court to remove her from being a member of council. So I said before, I've never done this before, and it's a very drastic step, but it's necessary. Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to take any questions that council may have.
Thank you. I will open up the floor. If there's any questions, you may ask it of our integrity commissioner. Counselor Dufer? You are on mute. Oh, no, I still can't hear you. No, can't hear you. We could hear Counselor Dufer earlier. You continue work on your technical issue, and I will see if there's any other questions from the floor. Counselor Hayden?
I just wonder, do you have any idea of the timeframe of how long this will go on?
I'm not a litigation lawyer. I've retained a litigation lawyer to do this, and I expect it to be three months, maybe four months, I'm sure. The court is in Sudbury, and to put this all together, it's going to take a number of months.
Thank you. Counselor Dufer, have you figured out that technical issue yet? No, cannot hear you. When we did hear you earlier. Another possibility, Counselor Dufer, is if you disconnected and reconnected really quick, it might readjust your settings. We, because we heard you when you first came in and just tested your audio equipment. So we should see Counselor Dufer disappear and then rejoin. Is there any other questions that we have while we have our integrity commissioner on the line? Okay, we do have a motion a little bit later in the agenda, in our regular session of council, that will just be the recommendation that we have received this report. So there's no, there's no further items other than just the reception of the report, and we're just going to wait for Counselor Dufer to see if he can come back and adjust that technical issue quickly. Hey, Counselor Dufer, you appear frozen. Oh, there you are. See if you can unmute now and try. No, we cannot hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
I just thought maybe it was something technical everywhere.
No, Counselor Dufer did have his system when he first logged in, and we were able to hear him, but I think he's now turned something off that he's trying to figure out what it was. Okay, is there a button that you have, Counselor Dufer, that says "Join with Audio"? The top of your screen. All right. Sorry for the little delay. We're just, Counselor Malott?
Could you get him to maybe call in his question?
We can. He may be able to join with a phone number. Counselor Dufer, do you see, in the invitation, there should be a phone number on that invitation that you received? That you can call into the meeting with a phone call. Uh-oh, did I disconnect? No. You can't state it out loud. Okay, I guess since we cannot resolve your question, Counselor Dufer, if you wish to send your question later, I will attempt to get an answer for you. In the meantime, if you check your initial message from Tracy that has a link to the Zoom meeting, there should be a phone number on that, and then you should be able to phone in, and then you'll get audio through your phone as opposed to through your computer. It's kind of the best I could suggest for you right now, but we do need to carry on with the meeting here. Okay, it appears that he might try reconnecting. So sorry, sorry, Mr. Swayze. Are there any further questions that we have for Mr. Swayze? Okay, I see no further questions. I'm not sure whether you're staying for the motion or whether you are going to leave us now. Mr. Swayze, that choice was yours.
Well, I, if Counselor Dufer is going to call in, I should probably stay to answer those questions, so I'll stay if you wish.
Okay, well, then if you don't mind staying, we'll see whether he can to make that connection, to call in those questions. And I believe that once that item is added to the agenda under the regular business of council, we can have him ask his questions at that point in time as well, because that will be on the floor as a motion. Okay, so we will move on with our regular consent agenda. I have a motion that I will need a mover and a seconder for a regular consent agenda. So Counselor Hayden, Counselor Foster? Okay, so the motion moved by Counselor Hayden, seconded by Counselor Foster, be it resolved that items G1 to K2 inclusive contained in Part 1 Consent Agenda be adopted. Is there, sorry, is there anything that anyone wishes severed on the consent agenda? Okay, so I'll just go through the items, and then if you have any questions or comments, we can discuss them. Under G section, we have a regular meeting of 40 minutes, November 24th, 2020. We have no board or committee reports, no business arising for boards and committees. We have item J1, which is our regular confirmatory bylaw. And then we have two reports that we have received. We've received a Public Works Department report for November 2020, and we have the Public Health Sudbury and Districts Meeting Minutes of November 19th, 2020. So any questions or comments on those items? Okay, I will call the motion then. So I'm sorry, the motion is missing, seems to be missing some names. Okay, so I'll call the motion, Counselor Foster.
Hello?
Oh, hey, we have Counselor Dufer. Just hold tight. We're just voting on the consent.
Now, I can't hear you.
I am not muted. Can hear you, though. Try just your volume on your computer now.
I can't hear you right now. I see your mouth moving, or I don't even know if it's talking to me, but can you hear me? So I got it half-fixed.
Yes. So we're, this is challenging sometimes with technology. We are carrying on the vote for the consent agenda. So I'm just going to go in the order of the names that I have here. Counselor Foster?
Microphone.
For?
Thank you. Counselor Duplessis?
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Hayden?
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Malott?
In favor.
And where am I, who am I missing? Counselor Dufer can hear me, but he can't, sorry, can't hear me. This is really difficult this evening. Counselor Van Alstine, sorry for not readmitting you. We are waiting for Counselor Dufer to come back, who's had some technical issues. So I have had not added you, sorry, when we had discussed the consent agenda. So we are just voting on accepting the consent agenda as adopted. I'm not sure if you have any questions on anything that came up with the consent agenda. No, so we are just voting in favor of accepting the consent agenda. So Counselor Van Alstine, did you wish to vote on that this evening then?
On the consent agenda?
Yes, on the consent agenda.
Fine.
Okay, so are you voting in favor? And Counselor Dufer, fixed that sound yet?
I think if I want to vote, I'll say yes. Is that for, that's the consent agenda, I believe?
That, yes, that is a consent agenda.
Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. We don't usually have this much difficulty with technology.
That's true.
Okay, Counselor Dufer, we are going to let you ask your question when we get to the Sorry, my Zoom just disconnected and reconnected. What we're going to do, Counselor Dufer, is let you ask your question when we get to that item on the regular agenda. We just have one motion to read before we go to the agenda regarding the integrity commissioner's report. So we'll deal with the motions in order as they show up on the agenda, and then we will move into item L2, and we'll ask Counselor Van Alstine to, you know, go back to the waiting room at that point in time. Okay, so we do have a motion to accept the consent agenda, that it be approved, so I'll need a mover and a seconder for that. Counselor Malott and Counselor Van Alstine? Be it resolved, the consent application, B0920, be approved. So again, I'm going to call that vote. Counselor Foster? Counselor Foster, you are now muted.
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor Duplessis?
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor Hayden? Thank you, Counselor Malott?
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor, who am I, Counselor Van Alstine?
In favor.
And Counselor Dufer? I'm not sure. Counselor Dufer, you are muted again. Were you in favor of the consent application?
In favor.
Thank you. And I am in favor that motion is carried. Okay, so we are now moving on to item L2, and this is the motion to receive the the integrity commissioner's report. Okay. So Counselor Van Alstine is back in the waiting room for this item. I'll need a mover and a seconder to put this on the floor. Counselor Malott and Counselor Hayden? Okay, I'll read the motion, then it'll be opened up on the floor for discussion, and then Counselor Dufer will be able to ask this question. So moved by Counselor Malott, seconded by Counselor Hayden, be it resolved that council received for information the report from the integrity commissioner dated December 2nd, 2020, finding that Counselor Van Alstine has allegedly contravened the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and advising that the integrity commissioner will be making an application to a judge under Section 8 of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for determination that Counselor Van Alstine has contravened Section 5 of the statute. So I'll open up the floor. Counselor Dufer, you may ask your question.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to look for it right now. Well, I can ask anyway. Mr. Swayze, you, I noticed that we got a conflict here of interest. First of all, the pecuniary example that was given earlier, I wonder why it is that Counselor Van Alstine is not in the same room, seeing that she's allowed to argue the point before, after, and during the meeting?
I can answer that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes? Yes.
Am I being heard?
Yes, you are.
Counselor Van Alstine was in the room when the report was considered, and I advised her that this is the previous report where I advised her that she should, she could participate, but this is an information report. The council has no power to order me not to go to court. I've made that decision. I've reluctantly made it, but it's because of the behavior of Counselor Van Alstine, and she doesn't need to be in this part of the meeting. She could be part of the meeting if she wants to be, because it's only a receipt of the report. Now, other than abundance of caution, she might want to declare a conflict and not receive the report. On the other hand, she has no problem being involved in this, in this part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you for that. Just one more, I just got to look for.
Yep.
Oh, yes, there was a 4-3 vote you had said on your Page 4 of the report. Did you believe that that changed the outcome of the vote because it was a 4-3 vote?
I don't think it did. I think that if it had been a 3-3 vote, the motion would have lost.
Yeah, that's correct.
Bylaw, so it didn't matter.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to relay that.
Counselor Malott?
Okay, Mr. Swayze, when you bring this before a judge, is it just yourself and Maureen and the judge? Or like, who stands in defense for Maureen?
Well, I assume that you have insurance that Ms. Van Alstine can hire a lawyer to defend herself. I don't know the circumstances, but but I'm taking the matter to court, and she has the right to defend herself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, so I'll just read the motion again. Moved by Counselor Malott, seconded by Counselor Hayden, be it resolved that council received for information the report from the integrity commissioner dated December 2nd, 2020, finding that Counselor Van Alstine has allegedly contravened the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and advising that the integrity commissioner will be making an application to the judge under Section 8 of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for determination that Counselor Van Alstine has contributed Section 5 of the statute. So Counselor Foster, how do you vote on this issue?
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Duplessis?
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor Hayden? Thank you, Counselor Malott?
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor Dufer?
In favor.
Thank you, and I'm in favor that motion has carried. So thank you very much, Mr. Swayze.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to all of council, and I will, with your permission, withdraw.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have added Counselor Van Alstine back to the meeting, so it'll take just for a second for her computer to make the connection. So it'll take just for a second for her computer to make the connection. Okay, welcome back, Counselor Van Alstine. So the next item is a recommendation regarding the skating oval. And Counselor Foster has declared a conflict on this one. So Counselor Foster is going to be placed in the waiting room. And we'll pull you back out when this item has been voted on. Okay, so Counselor Foster is now in the waiting room. We have the motion regarding the outdoor rink. I will need a mover and a seconder for this motion. Counselor Hayden and Counselor Duford, both your hands. Okay, so be it resolved that leaders, persons, and Lions have entered and agreed to partner together for the purposes of creating an outdoor skating oval at the outdoor track and field for the 2020-2021 skating season. So I would open up the floor to discussion. Counselor Alstine does have the first right from talking to the board. Okay, she states that she has nothing right now. Open up for discussion or comment. Okay, my concern with this one, I'm not seeing any other hands go up. My concern with this is just the extra burden that is going to place, be placed on the municipality. It is stated in the report that it is to be done with volunteers. But my concern is we do have to have Public Works Department looking at potentially having somebody available there. We do have to have all of the Lions Club, the volunteers, get their CPIC information. And we need to make sure that we have somebody supervising from the municipality. So I do think there are some concerns. So if we do get to a point of agreement, I really am hoping that we do ask that and provide direction for staff to bring it back before any ice is put in. Because I would want to see any, what the COVID protocols are in place that they're putting in, and any other provisions that we have. We know that we are already down in manpower at Public Works. And so I worry about putting extra burden on them to even opening up the hydrants and rewinterizing them every time that ice needs to be flooded. So are there any other comments on this, on this issue? Counselor Duford.
There's also a truck they can use, right, to water the oval?
Well, I believe that it is in the agreement. It is the volunteers that are looking at doing that. So they would know unless they have their own truck for flooding, they wouldn't be using our stuff. They'd be using the hoses connected to the hydrant.
Okay, one more thing. We're not going to supply a list for the Lions Club dealing with the COVID-19. They're going to have to supply their own list. That's what I read.
They're going to have to provide their own, what their protocols are going to be. But being that it is a municipal property, I would think that there, we do have to worry about what that is. Because it is still our property that we'd be dealing with and that they'd be using.
And that was my point, Your Worship. It's because of that. I mean, I think we, it's almost like letting them do it and then say, no, it's not good enough. You can't, you know, you're not going to end up taking the ice. Because first of all, you're COVID-19, strategies are wrong, and so on and so forth.
Well, that's why I'm wondering whether we just ask that that plan be brought back to council before the ice is put in. Right, so it's prior to that.
Yeah, okay then.
Hey, Counselor Duplessis.
Yeah, just a couple words. I agree with you, Your Worship, at both of those points. I think if it was next year, I wouldn't agree on it. Because we do have a very low expense skating. And we do have a couple of rinks by Pine Grove Park that are free. And not all recreation can be free in the town. But I think with the virus this year, I would reluctantly say we should go ahead with it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments? Okay, so what about the direction of bringing the agreement back before the ice goes in? I'll actually ask our clerk, would you like to see that added to the motion as the amendment? So it's documented, or is the direction going to be fine?
That's a good question. I guess it would be best to amend the motion that the agreement be brought to council then, prior to the ice coming in.
Okay, so I am going to make that amendment. I'm just going to write the wording on the motion. Then what we will need to do is vote on the amendment, and then we will vote on the motion.
Your Worship, could I just clarify with regards to the ice? And I know Mr. Yusko goes on the line, so he could, he probably has a better idea than me. But I do believe that the hydrant is only going to be used when the ice is first put in. And then there's some sort of tank with a sprayer that they're going to flood with, you know, in the interim. So I guess only if there was maybe a lot of snow or something and they needed the hydrant. So that wouldn't be every time. I just wanted to clarify that. Levitates a little of the work on Public Works. So maybe Mr. Yusko had something further to add.
Sure, thanks. And I do see that in the staff report. I just missed that part. So Mr. Yusko, do you have anything to add about this agreement so far in terms of what you know?
No, Cynthia is correct. The Lions Club does have a tractor that could pull the tank with the spray bar. And the activation of the hydrant would only be used in the first two or three initial floods. And then after that, the lines would be self-sustaining.
Okay. Okay, so the amendment to the motion is just added to the end of the motion. So it would be, the wording I would like to add is that any agreement be brought to council for review prior to the ice being put in place. So the whole motion would read, Leisure Service and Lions Club enter into an agreement to partner together for the purposes of creating an outdoor skating oval at the outdoor track and field for the 2021 skating season, and that the agreement be brought to council for review prior to the ice being put in place. So that's what the full motion is, has, is worded. And it's just the amendment at the end that we need to vote on first. Counselor Van Alstine.
Well, this is our meeting, our last meeting for December. Our next one isn't until the, what, the 8th or later in January? When did the Lions want to have their ice ready? Because to me, they're going to go all past the Christmas season. So you're kind of tying their hands by waiting for it to come back, aren't you? Sorry.
The first meeting in January is January 12.
Yes.
So isn't that kind of behind them if they want to get the ice out for Christmas?
I'm not sure when the ice usually goes in. Mr. Yusko, maybe you can give us a little bit of information about when we even get the ice in at the outdoor skating rink at Pine Grove Park?
It's really dependent on the temperatures, where we want to have consistent temperatures below zero. For the Pine Grove Park, we always try to have the ice in before the Christmas. The Lions, with regards to the oval, I know the Lions are excited to start as soon as council approves it.
Okay. We can ask that the agreement be brought to council or be sent to council for review? And then a special meeting could be called if there's concerns. Counselor Milat?
Last year, it was February. It was right before our winter carnival that the Lions decided to do the oval. Am I not correct on that? So I don't think that it's, it's not a big issue. Like even if it's in for the end of January, first part of February, they still have lots of time for skating.
Hey, Counselor Duplessis?
I think it would be a good idea to have it in before Christmas. I think last year what happened is that we were approached late about it. I don't think we were approached before the end of the, you know, last year. Why don't we leave it in management's hands? Because they're more familiar with the COVID protocol than we are. And if something's, I'm sure there, I don't know who they're discussing with, the Lions. Are they getting the information from the town? I mean, we're up on that now. And if it's the regulations that exist now, then we go ahead with it.
Okay, well, the wording has been put on the motion in terms of an amendment. So what we could always do is vote down the amendment to bring it back to council first. We'll see whether that, and then we still vote on the actual amendment to put in the skating rink. So we can make the choice in terms of what we, whether we want the amendment to carry or not. And then we will vote on the motion.
Okay.
And so the first vote that I'm going to take right now, unless there's future discussion, is just on the amendment about bringing the agreement back to council for review prior to the ice being put in place. So Counselor Foster is not here. Counselor Duplessis, how do you vote on that, on the amendment?
Against.
Okay, Counselor Hayden? Okay, Counselor Van Alstine?
Against.
Okay, Counselor Milat?
Against.
And who am I, Counselor Duford?
Against.
Okay, and I am going to vote in favor, and that is defeated. So now we're back to the original motion. And if, is there any other discussion on the original motion? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote for that. Counselor Duplessis.
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor Hayden. Thank you, Counselor Van Alstine.
In favor.
Okay, Counselor Milat?
In favor.
And Counselor Duford?
In favor.
Thank you. And I'm in favor of that motion, so that motion is carried. Okay, we'll let Counselor Foster back in. Welcome back, Counselor Foster. That motion has carried. Okay, so the next motion on the agenda is the motion, the request for a municipal water filling station. So we do need a mover and a seconder for that item. So Counselor Van Alstine, Counselor Foster. Okay, so the motion reads, moved by Counselor Van Alstine, seconded by Counselor Foster, be it resolved that the request for a municipal water filling station be denied. Counselor Van Alstine, you have the first right to speak on this motion.
How, it has in the request that his house is terminal? Has this been an ongoing condition, or is it?
We don't have information or will not disclose information about someone's condition. This is what's been disclosed to us, that's what we know.
In that case, then, after reading what the request was and the recommendation, I have no problem with you giving to this individual my contact information. I don't know whether or not I, on a personal level, would be able to be of assistance. But if I can, I will.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay, I don't see any further comments. So I will call this motion. Counselor Foster.
For.
Thank you, Counselor Duplessis.
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor Hayden. Thank you, Counselor Milat.
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor Van Alstine.
In favor.
Thank you. Sorry, I have to add a couple of names at the bottom of these motions here. Counselor Duford.
In favor.
Thank you. And I'm in favor, so that motion has also carried. Okay, next item for discussion is we have a motion to approve a donation request in the amount of $2,500. I'll need a motion, a mover and a seconder for this item. Counselor Foster? And the seconder, sorry, Counselor Van Alstine. Okay, so the motion moved by Counselor Foster, seconded by Counselor Van Alstine, be it resolved that council approve a donation request in the amount of $2,500. Counselor Foster, I'll open up for you.
I don't have anything to say there, okay? I think it's a good thing.
Okay, any other comments from the floor on this item? Okay, I see none. I'm going to just also state that there is a budget line item that the firefighters do receive money for doing the home inspections. Because that, those home inspections doesn't occur this year, we're still looking at making that donation to the association. And the budget and amount initially was $4,700. And I had that written down. So this, this amount that we're giving him is less than that because we didn't carry out kind of the initial mandate. So the request is for $2,500. So I just wanted to make sure that counsel is aware that there is some budgeted amount in there that we will be drawing from to make this donation. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call the motion. Counselor Foster.
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor Duplessis.
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor Hayden. Thank you, Counselor Milat.
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor Van Alstine.
In favor.
And Counselor Duford?
In favor.
And I am in favor of this motion, so this motion has carried. Okay, so we will move on with the agenda. We have no other business items to discuss. The rest is kind of informational that only. So we have received some correspondence. Now, we do have somebody that has their sound on and is creating some background sound. So I'm just wondering if you can make sure that you are muted. Thank you. So we do have some information items that have been received. We have some correspondence from Enbridge, as well as resolutions from the city of Belleville and the city of Quint West. We have the Roma Virtual Conference, that's January 25th and 26th. And so far, we still have Counselor Milat that is attending that. So we will move on with mayor and council reports. And I'm just going to go clockwise around my screen. Counselor Milat, I'll start with you.
I have nothing here, Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Hayden.
I just wanted to commend the town of Espinola. I've been driving around and looking at all the wonderful lights this year. And I know some people entered the contest that was with the town, and that was really wonderful to see. And it's just so great to see everybody being a part with the Christmas spirit and enjoying the Christmas season. So just wanted to give a shout out to the people.
We can't hear you.
Yeah. I just saw that I was muted. Sorry about the feedback that you're getting from Counselor Hayden. We're still working out the technology on issues. Counselor Duplessis?
I was wondering about a letter we received from the citizens on Old Webbwood Road a few, maybe a month ago. Is that something that's going to come to council, or has that been handled?
That has gone to the Police Services Board for discussion. And the Police Services Board will, is looking at that, the whole issue in a little bit more detail. and the Police Services Board will, is looking at that, the whole issue in a little bit more depth to make the recommendation to council.
Okay, thank you. I just want to wish staff and council and citizens of Espinola a safe season. It's a very different year, and everybody has to be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Foster?
I'd also like to wish everybody Merry Christmas.
A nice, short and sweet. Thank you, Counsel Foster. Counsel Van Alstine?
Yes, I'd like to bring forth a notice of motion. I'd like to have a committee of the whole meeting sometime between now and January the 26th of 2021. I would like to have the Human Resource Consultant, Aral Mallow, present. If possible, the town attorney, and maybe even, if possible, Representative for Ministry of Municipal Affairs. I would like the topic to be the employee, sorry, contract that I had put a notice of motion in on November 26th. I would like to bring that forward along with the contract so that all of council and the attendees can review and discuss and determine whether or not there's anything resolution to come forward.
Okay, can you then send that notice of motion to me, please? I had declined to put the last notice of motion on, and I had provided the reasons for you. All right, so please send me this one. Do you have anything further, Counsel Van Alstine?
Well, I would like to have had that voted on tonight. Since we aren't discussing anything, I am putting forward that motion now, if I could have a seconder.
I just submit the notice of motion as to, as for the process, and we will go through the process. Your last motion, notice of motion, was declined to do, and I've had given you the reasons.
I would like all of those included in the meeting. That's why I'm asking for everyone present.
Okay, so send that in to me, and I will have that added to the next agenda or potentially call a special meeting.
I would prefer a special meeting, but thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dufour.
Yes, because of my technical difficulties earlier. Missed the first vote. Could anybody tell me what that was? That had to do with 721 and 731 Center.
Oh, that was the technical severance, and that vote had passed. It was a, so that, that was the result of the vote. Did you need any more information than that?
No, I think that's good. I just wanted to know whether or not it was gonna pass. I already read the information.
Okay.
Now, I'd like, I too would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and and Happy New Year. And for God's sakes, watch yourself out there with all this COVID-19. I hope the vaccine is gonna finally get to us. They say by spring, maybe, so we'll see. But thank you very much, and a Merry Christmas to all of you.
Okay, thank you. So just to report, since we're talking about COVID, I, just before this meeting, read an email that I've been invited to participate in a call-in meeting with the provincial government. So with Premier Ford, the Deputy Premier, Minister of Health, the Solicitor General, Minister Clark, and General Hillier on the COVID-19 vaccination strategy. So that's going to be happening tomorrow, and I will be able to participate in that call. So I just received that information, so I thought that I would share that. It was a call that is scheduled for heads of council. But I do, did see on the news that they reported that Northern Ontario right now is not really part of that vaccination strategy because of the very ultra-cold Pfizer vaccine needs to be distributed from, from one location. They can't transport that easily. So it'll be interesting to see what that strategy is gonna look like. And if I get information coming out of that, I will for sure share that. I also wanted to comment on the Christmas lights. I, it does seem to me that this year, there's a lot more lights on houses that I've ever seen. I've tried to put out additional lights myself this year, and I hope that council is participating in that light-up display. And you have, you know, even if you can get one string of lights out, it's nice, it's nice to see when you drive down a street where you have almost every house lit up on the street. So, so thank you to all of the residents, and thank you to the organizers of that, that light-up competition. I look forward to the Christmas season, like all of you. I hope that we do have everyone staying safe within our community, within our staff, and within our council, and that if we stay safe and if we take the necessary precautions, we can continue to avoid anything in the second wave. So that's my hope and my Christmas wish for the community. So that's all I have for this evening. I wish you all a good night. So my last thing I have is, sorry, a motion to adjourn. I almost forgot that part. So I'll need a mover and a seconder for the motion to adjourn. So I see lots of hands going up. I will pick Counsel Malat and Counsel Dufour. Okay, so moved by Counsel Malat, seconded by Counsel Dufour. Be it resolved that the regular meeting of council is hereby adjourned at 7:56 PM. And Counsel Foster, are you in favor of this?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Duplessis.
In favor.
Thank you, Counsel Hayden. Thank you, Counsel Malat.
I am in favor, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Merry Christmas. Counsel Van Alstine?
Sorry. In favor and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you as well. And Counsel Dufour?
In favor.
Thank you, and I'm in favor to adjourn, so have a wonderful holiday season, everyone.
You as well.